At this time I'll call the regular council meeting for Perry City Council Tuesday, April 16th, 2019 to board a vote. We have four. Item 4 is the invocation of the pledge of allegiance to the flag. If you're able, please rise. I'd like to call on Councilman Reverend Willie King with faith and Bible fellowship in the invocation.
Father God, we thank you so much for this day. And if you felt it, I pray now that what you continue to do is to give us a minute of knowledge and we continue to conduct the business of the city. And we feel a great thank you. And we actually invest it now. In fact, then we pray. Amen.
I'd like to call on Councilman Phyllis Byer Price to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I declare the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much.
My son was on the national board of hospital.
It's recognitions and presentations for A's of proclamation recognizing the manufacturing appreciation week. Y'all, please join me.
I can't hear him.
Would y'all introduce yourselves and then tell who you represent, please?
I'm Nick Osman, general manager for Interfor.
I'm Megan Black, from each other at Interfor.
Thank you. Perry, where Georgia comes together, I love it. A proclamation declaring April the 15th through the 19th, 2019, is Manufacturing Appreciation Week, whereas Georgia's Manufacturing Appreciation Week was established by the Technical College System of Georgia and the Georgia Department of Economic Development. Manufacturing Appreciation Week is celebrated April 15th through the 19th, 2019, whereas manufacturing is vital to Georgia's economy and has been the primary source of economic growth in the United States. Whereas nearly 9,400 manufacturing facilities are located in Georgia providing jobs for about 364,000 Georgians. The manufacturing operations such as transportation, equipment, aerospace, computers, electronics, food, paper, metal fabrication, textiles, glass, and plastics create state wealth by adding value to raw materials through the application of people's skills and investment in tools, technology, and talent. Whereas over 50 manufacturers are located in Houston County with the largest industrial complex in the state of Georgia, Robbins Air Force Base, employing 22,000 people. Houston County Industries provide opportunities through educational partnerships, company-sponsored community involvement efforts, and volunteer programs and civic involvement. Whereas the Georgia Manufacturer of the Year Awards will be presented at a luncheon on April the 18th at the Georgia International Convention Center to companies in small, medium, and large categories that exhibit a high degree of corporate responsibility and economic impact on Georgia and demonstrate a commitment to workforce excellence. Whereas we congratulate Clean and Control Corporation, Interfor, Purdue Farms, and their employees for being 2019 nominees while acknowledging Purdue Farms and Frito Lay as past winners of this prestigious award, Georgia's Manufacturer of the Year. We owe tremendous gratitude to all manufacturers in Houston County for the key role they play in promoting and ensuring a brighter and stronger future for citizens throughout the middle Georgia region. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the week of April 15th through the 19th be designated Manufacturing Appreciation Week, the 25th annual celebration to acknowledge the critical and fundamental importance of existing industry to the prosperity of our economy in the city of Perry and Houston County. So proclaim the 60th day of April in the year by Lord, 2019. Signed, James C. Kirkland Jr., Mayor, City of Perry. I'd like to present this to you. This one's in old English. I can't read old English. So I had it printed in the regular top. Anyway, you can hang that on the wall and I can get this other one so people can read it. Congratulations very much. Appreciate it.
On behalf of Interfor, we appreciate a wonderful relationship with the mayor and the city manager and the council members and the community and all the great folks that support our operations and want to thank you for your continued support. Gives us the confidence to continue to invest in this community and grow our business and that's what we're doing. So, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much. Just a second. We have Ms. Becky Lee with the Houston County Development Authority would like to have to say a few words.
Thank you, Mayor. On behalf of the Development Authority of Houston County, I'd like to thank you, Mayor Furclaw, and the council members for your support and partnership. Thank you for helping us strengthen Houston County industries and for all you do to make such a positive impact in our community.
I can learn to understand you much better if I could get familiar with you.
I don't speak that. This evening, we honor Interfor in category two of Manufacturer of the Year for Houston County. The Perry site was acquired from Paulson Lumber in 2014 and has been operational for decades. Interfor provides 170 quality manufacturing jobs and career opportunities in its Perry division. Additionally, the Perry division sources over 500 truckloads of logs for local sources each week. Foresters, loggers, and landowners in the local area are key stakeholders in their success. The Perry division produces over 150 million board feet of southern yellow pine lumber annually. Nearly 10 million dollars has been invested in the mill and new continuous dry kiln is being installed that will increase production by over 30 percent. Interfor invests in their people. The company recently launched their mill ride apprenticeship program where they select internal employees throughout their mills who want to grow their careers. Upon graduation from this three-year program, participants are certified journeyman mill rides, recognized by the U.S. Department of Labor. Please join me in congratulating Interfor Perry Division of 2019 Houston County Manufacturer of the Year.
Item 4B is the introduction of new employees. Chief Lee?
This is our mayor, Mayor Council. I ask both of our new employees to step forward at the same time and I'll introduce them in alphabet or how about that? Y'all can meet them. So, to my far left is Elizabeth Patcher, she goes by Beth. She grew up locally and graduated from Perry High School. I'll turn out the latency. And is currently enrolled in Central Georgia Tech in the criminal justice program. And she ended up showing, you know, show animals in high school right here in our city. And she comes to us from the Morris Police Department where she was an administrative person. And when she decided to sit off for her career, she chose Perry, getting back to her old place, I guess. We're pleased to have her. She is a police officer trainee. She'll be going to the academy in May-17, which is actually July. We have Rhea Moore, who might be left. Rhea was born in Biloxi. Her mother's a career U.S. Air Force officer. And they ended up here. Both mom and dad work on Robbins Air Force Base now. Rhea is a veteran recruit from Savannah State with criminal justice with minor in homeland security. She comes to us from corrections where she was corrections officer for a total of five years with juvenile justice and with the mental health facility where she takes some previous skills in building mental health and de-escalation and some things that'll be extremely valuable out on the road. They both started academy at the same time. I know they're in that county string. So, could y'all introduce yourselves to Mayor Council?
Glad to have you both. I'm Elizabeth Patcher. It's more, thank you for choosing the best police department anywhere in the world. Sorry, Morris. It's okay. These guys, men and women, will have your back. You'll have theirs. There's a wealth of knowledge, there's a wealth of history, there's a wealth of tradition that you were joined in. And you will have as much impact on your fellow officers as they will have on you. We're looking forward to a long, prosperous, and successful career from both of you. Again, thank you for choosing the best police department. We welcome you to the city of Perry. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item 4C is the introduction of a new building maintenance manager. Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir, Mayor Council. I'm Reno. Would you like to jump me up front? Another new employee for y'all to meet. It's my pleasure to introduce y'all to Rena Davis. Rena Davis is our new building maintenance manager.
Yes, sir.
Rena is originally from Orlando. She comes to us with a wealth of experience. She has been in the building maintenance field for 29 years. Prior to coming to the city of Perry, she was with Orange County, Florida, for 14 years where she kind of worked her way up through that system and ultimately was in charge of preventative maintenance for the 2.9 million square foot convention-
8.7 million square foot.
8.7 million square foot convention center down there. It's actually the second largest in the country. Prior to that, she was with the University of South Florida doing similar types of things. I believe she got her start in construction. After that, she built a wealth of knowledge in HVAC, plumbing, electrical, but kind of her niche is something that she's really developed a keen skill set on is preventative maintenance and kind of hiring operations with buildings, facilities, saving energy costs, all that type of thing, which makes her a very attractive employee for us. She just moved here to Houston County. She actually has some family here. So, you know, welcome to Rena. I know she's going to do an excellent job. And if you ever need anything with any of our facilities, she's one to contact.
Fantastic. Miss Douglas, I'll tell you the same thing. Not only do we have a fantastic police department, fire department, and all the other departments, we need your help keeping these old buildings rocking and rolling because I love air conditioning. Spend this time of year.
Just letting all that to you. I am a licensed mechanical person.
Fantastic. Where are you being?
In Orlando, trying to get out.
Well, you have arrived. Congratulations and thank you for making that decision.
Thank you for having me. Y'all have an absolutely beautiful city. And everywhere I have been so far, I've been beyond welcome. And that means a lot to me, getting on my comfort lane, coming from my hometown and moving away from family. It's been a very warm experience so far and I continue to build great relationships with y'all. And like he said, anybody who needs me, feel free to reach out. Y'all do, as I can.
Fantastic. Again, well, I would give you the same. Item 4D is a recognition of some firefighters. Chief Parker?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Mayor Council, we have some recognition we want to give tonight to some firefighters. So I'll ask Lieutenant Minner and firefighter Snyder to come forward, please. I will note that two of our firefighters are not able to be here tonight. Caleb Woods, his wife gave birth to Jamison Reed Woods, April 13th at 11:30 at night, seven pounds, one ounce, 21 inches long. And Hunter Fornoy, his wife gave birth to Landon James Fornoy on April 16th, early this morning, about 3:30. A whopping eight pound, 11 ounce, 21 and 3/4 inch man. So, y'all come to this. But, you know, a lot of times firefighters and other public safety folks get overlooked and don't feel like what they do is very significant. But I want to tell you that recently when I went to the Georgia Association of Fire Chiefs Conference in Savannah, one of the things we talked about there in our group discussion was the fact that the help that we gave Talbot County back on March the 3rd was very well needed by that county over there. If any of you have ever been that way, it's a very poor area of our state and they were pretty much devastated that day. And these two gentlemen stepped up, volunteered to go over there, and did an outstanding job while they were there. So what I want to do, I'm going to read a commendation letter that we have for them for the fire department. So it states, "Letter of Commendation Presented to Lieutenant Dave Minner, firefighter paramedic Hunter Fornoy, firefighter Brock Snyder, and firefighter Caleb Woods. On Sunday, March 3rd, Talbot County, Georgia received major damage to approximately 50 structures and other infrastructure issues as a result of an EF2 tornado which traveled three miles and a half a mile wide. On March the 5th at approximately 5:00 a.m., multiple Talbot County fire departments responded to a fire that claimed the life of a 67-year-old man. This incident devastated the already worn-out volunteer fire community of Talbot County. A request was made to the Georgia Mutual Aid Group through the Georgia Emergency Management Agency to send three fire engines with crews assigned to backfill the Talbot County fire stations to give the volunteer members needed rest. The Perry Fire Department selected Lieutenant Dave Minner, firefighter paramedic Hunter Fornoy, firefighter Brock Snyder for the assignment. On March 5th, they worked a 24-hour shift at one of the Talbot County fire stations and returned on March the 6th. When a second GMAC request was made on March 7th, Lieutenant Minner and paramedic Fornoy volunteered to return and firefighter Caleb Woods was selected to go with them. Together, the crews responded to multiple emergency calls and stated that all of the devastation was an eye-opener for them. Gentlemen, thank you for your attention to the needs of others and your tireless efforts to make things better. On behalf of the Perry Fire Department and citizens of our community, I would like to commend you for your actions. Your dedication to providing such excellent service and compassion clearly demonstrates your commitment to carrying on the Perry Fire Department's proud reputation of excellence in public service." And thank you again very much. Appreciate it, guys. Thank y'all very much.
Council, talk about our free council meeting. Item 4B is being pulled from the agenda. Item 4F is Spring Cleanup Week. Ms. Davis?
Many of you may have council from here. There was summary on Spring Cleanup Week for 2019. This has been our fourth year doing the spring cleanup as well as the fall cleanup. During this cleanup, during this cleanup, we collect such items as buckwheats, paint cans, and tires. Buckwheats is basically anything that's $2 to go in your trash container such as furniture, appliances, and such sort of mattresses. And also, we take paint cans along with tires. During the course of the year on the regular collection, we do not take paint cans. Only time we take paint cans and tires is during the spring cleanup and as well as the fall cleanup. During this course of the year, the tires. This year, we collected 60 tons of buckwheats opposed to 51 tons last year. And that's fell short of my goal. I was looking for like 60 out of 80 to 90 tons, but we got 60. So, that's still a success because on the average week, we only collect about 15 tons of buckwheats. So that's a success in itself, collecting 60 tons compared to last year. And then also, some of the bricks that we took of the buckwheats had to put out, CVC mattresses, everything, homes, tore down fence, tire right there, and paint cans. This year, we collected 602 cans of paint, a whole 253 cans last year. And a lot of times, when the can paints out, we have to put either sand or kittle in it to absorb the paint. So, but we had a couple incidents where residents didn't do it. They had it heated inside the brush and then when the boom hit, it spilled out. Then we got to quick dry it, clean the streets up and also the trucks. Then thirdly, we have, that's the paint cans. Then the thirdly, we collected tires. Compared to last year, we collected 303 tires opposed to 227 tires last year. Normally, tires are collected during the week, but we have a lot of residents pick them out. Anytime they're out on the street, we pick them up because it's ISO and in the ride-a-ride. But normally, we only try to pick them up two times a year. And a lot of times, people don't realize that tires are petroleum-based, so we can't take them to the landfill. So, we take them, we have a tire cage down there that we use for living tire. They come pick them up, take them up the jacks, and recycle them. But anytime we do see tires, we pick them up all the course of the year, but mainly get a fund as to do it, get the spring cleanup and fall cleanup. This is some of the tires we had there. But like I said, you see, we had 303 tires that we collected this year opposed to 227 last year. And the summary of this is an agent verification that cleans up the city by doing this spring and fall cleanup. Allows citizens to get rid of items we collect during home collection, maybe the tires and the paint cans. So during the course of the week, we always have carpet, we have mattresses, we have furniture, we pick it up on a weekly basis. And also, citizens really get excited by this. They call them, Ms. King, I had met a citizen since January, went to the day for the spring cleanup. So, I think it's a success. Fell short of my goal. I wanted to give at least 8 tons. We got 60, but compared to the average of 15 tons, I think that's a great success. And it keeps growing year by year. Thanks for the mayor and council, they must be able to do this for twice a year. Any questions, comments?
Questions, Council?
I think that's fantastic. I don't know what that says about the citizens of Perry. We keep increasing all the trash that we can pick up. I think it's very positive. If it's not in our yards, it's not unsightly. Y'all are doing a fantastic job of picking that up. I think you're going to meet your goal. You just have to sit tight.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. You've done a great job.
Glad to be here.
Item 5, citizens with input. Anyone here wish to address council at this time?
Mayor Council, Dorby, this is the Chamber of Commerce. Just want to make sure you know about two events this Thursday. At 8:30 a.m. is the grand opening ribbon cutting for Walmart's online shopping area. I've already heard that it's been very well received. We hope you can join us. Then at 11 a.m. is our business of the month, and that is an apple pear here in Perry. So, we hope that you can join us, add us to events. That evening, I know that there's other activities going on, but there is a book signing for Larry Walker Jr., former representative and former regent for the university system at the Arts Center from 5 to 7. Anyone that allows time to be with us, we hope you can be with us on that event as well.
Tell us about the Dogwood Festival.
The Dogwood Festival was, it was quite a success. Downtown was packed and extremely busy. We heard very much favorable comments about the new expanded footprint. We were very pleased with that. And it was still a little bit windy Saturday evening sadly. So, we didn't get to do the tether rides. We did, our pilots worked very hard to get the military salute, loose those balloons up as best they could. And Pokey the Turtle was riding for the kids to get to enjoy. And the contest of all of the little pilot cards and the event cards seemed to be a big hit. And the walkabout balloon, we were very grateful it was there because they stayed busy as well in the kids zone. So, tough weather in April, I'll just be honest with you. But we still at least had about 4,000 or so people with us on the field, probably another 1,500 or more at least surrounding the event watching and waiting to see. But at least those that were there had a good time. Had one of your favorite sons in the dignitary, U.S. Secretary of Ag, Sonny Perdue, saw fit to join us. He was in town. So, we were pleased about that at least. Yeah, but we'll see what we can do with weather. I don't know. I need that magic one. So if anyone can find that, forget the hard gold at the end of the rainbow. I need a wind one. But thank y'all for your support. It's always a great partnership with the city and we're very pleased. Especially when they have to load in and load out on a Saturday because somebody asked me how we make that decision and I very quickly told them, "We listen to our EMS." And when Chief Parker kept us surprised all day long and he said, "It's not good for Sunday," we listen and we appreciate that partnership and the confidence that we have in our leaders and Steve, Chief Lynn as well. Thank you. But most of it was all good stuff. We just lost Sunday and couldn't have it in the balloons. But we'll keep working. It's still an event to bring people into Perry.
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address council?
Yes, sir. Bob Cunningham, I live in Houston Springs. On the northwest corner of Ball and Commerce, there's a double parking lot. There's a pole there that's got a push button to walk. It was broken last summer and it's still broken. So, you can't get around across the street against it. So, northwest corner of Ball and Commerce, where there's a double parking lot.
Right. Thank you, sir. Anyone else want to address council?
Yeah, well, Mr. Mayor, thank you. It's been a long time since I've filled a seat up there. I think this lady that lived on our street had petition about Glenwood Avenue. I'm a little reluctant to say a whole lot about Glenwood Avenue because I don't want to pick on trees and straw. But in order to commend the police department, fire department, what fine jobs they do. And note the way Perry's situated, it's, you know, a big job with interstate and all We are well concerned about the speeding on Glenwood Avenue. It's a straight shot and people come from Pocahatchie and that way and make the turn and, you know, and they gone. She's got small children. Father, go when I started to come here and backed out of my, I had to wait on four or five cars just to get out of my driveway. And it's amazing having the cars going down the street. Most, all the city trucks going down that street. They pull their excavators, semi-trucks. The other day, a log truck went down through there going to, out there to the lumberyard. I don't know what needs to be done. I've noticed the police department has put some cars out there here lately. I think it made one case that, just when I saw. So, the petition said speed bumps. I'm not sure, I mean, we had to get something said, but I'm not sure that the street needs speed bumps. But Glenwood Avenue needs some attention. It's a little narrow street and I don't have any drainage except water just goes through the ground and some of the spots where mailboxes, it's just full of water and everything, you know. But what I'm asking the council to do is to take a look at Glenwood Avenue. The double lines need to be re-struck and school buses using every day. And when a school bus goes up, the, but it's going to the school, the left wheels is across the line. The other way, down across the line because that's a don't to be in a ditch. Of course, when semi-trucks go down through there, I'm assuming that most of the semis are going to the school for supplies. I ain't sure of that. Anyway, I think our request is that, that take a look at Glenwood Avenue and see what can be done. You got anything?
Yeah, I've been in touch with Robert Smith about the speed on our street. We have a one-year-old child and people fly down our street all the time. What started it was a little more than a roofed truck fully passed. I called the owner, Phil Jordan Roofing, and explained to him my concerns. Looks back for the business first off. And it's just that first rate, speed is crazy. Speed limit is 25, but people are coming off of Main Street, turning on our street, not seeing it as a neighborhood, but as a cut through just to get to Tucker Road to get to the ball field. And Tuesdays and Thursdays when ball is going on, traffic is crazy. So, then the next one was a city of Perry truck speeding down, went towards town and then came right back a few minutes later and then that's when I called Robert. And he told me that I needed to get a certain percentage of the Glenwood property owners to get speed bumps or something on our road to slow the speed down. So I got 15 of the 19 property owners. I didn't get the other four because they just weren't home and I can go get those if I need to. But I would like you to look at it. But I did talk to him about maybe getting police out there and I have noticed more police patrols out there. Still hasn't slowed the speed down very much though, other than when people see the police officers there. So, just take a look at our road and help us out a little bit. Because we have a beautiful street and it's just hard to live there with all the speed of the traffic. But, thank you.
Your name, ma'am?
I'm sorry? I'm sorry?
Your name?
Mallory Porter.
Thank you, ma'am. We had a discussion about this, we've already assigned that task to Chief Lynn and also Mr. Smith about not just speed bumps, but alternative traffic control, not necessarily devices, but we are, we've started that, and it will be looked into. We'll have another report by next week for, from this national chief Lynn's already taken under advisement. He's stepped up patrol over the emergency for active presence going forward. Thank you. Anyone else like to address counsel?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Counsel, this is Robin Jackson from City of Perry. And I must say, I congratulate the Fire Department and Police Department on Thursday night, April eleventh, twenty nineteen, incident that happened up there on James Street. And I just talked to him, and I always come back, talking about James Street, where they done the incident, they couldn't get on Hilltop, not could he get off Hilltop because of the incident. And I'm just still asking the city, will they please consider another alternative as far as getting in and off of Hilltop other than James Street Road? So this is what I'm asking the council to do, to consider that idea because like I said, if there's another emergency, while that emergency was going on, then there was no way that you could get on Hilltop area.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
Mr. Jackson, may I? Yes. I was in a meeting with the school superintendent, and that's one of the issues, a couple weeks ago, to ask what the intentions of that property is. He said they had no intention of getting rid of any of it.
Our options are limited, but we will continue to keep it as a program. Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to address counsel? Thank you. Item six is the review of minutes, counsel. Item six A, for your consideration, you have been provided the minutes of the April first, two thousand nineteen work session meeting, the April second, two thousand nineteen council meeting, and the April second, two thousand nineteen council meeting. At this time, I will entertain a motion. We approve these minutes as presented. Second. A motion and a second. Are there any additions, additions, changes, or discussions regarding these minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item seven is old business. Seven A are ordinances for a second reading and adoption. Seven A one, this is the second reading of an ordinance for rezoning of property from RAG Residential Agricultural District from the county to RAG Residential Agricultural District in the city. The property is located at eighteen twenty-four Houston Lake Road, tax map number zero 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 five six zero six two thousand, and nineteen oh four Highway one twenty-seven, tax map number zero 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 five six zero zero forty-eight thousand. Mr. Wood?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, council. This is property that is to be annexed into the city, which will be your next ordinance, but must be zoned first. The property is approximately eighty-eight acres. It's located on Houston Lake Road, just to the east of the intersection with Perry Parkway. You can see here, there are two parcels included. The smaller parcel is developed with a single-family home. The remaining acreage is farmland or otherwise unbillable. The applicant requests the annexation and the zoning of RAG in the city, which is similar to the RAG, or Residential Agricultural, in the county. In reviewing this, the staff recommended approval, and the planning commission also recommends approval of this zoning and the annexation.
Sir, is any member of council having any questions, Mr. Wood, regarding the rezoning of this property? Hearing none. At this time, I'll entertain a motion that we adopt this ordinance for the rezoning of this property at these two addresses described. Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. Item seven A two is the second reading of an ordinance for the annexation of property from RAG Residential Agricultural District to the county to RAG Residential Agricultural District to the city. The property is located at eighteen twenty-four Houston Lake Road. You already know the tax map number, nineteen oh four Highway one twenty-seven, same tax, dividend tax map number. Mr. Wood, is there anything different other than this is the annexation of said property?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Questions, counsel? Hearing none. At this time, I'll entertain a motion that we adopt the ordinance for the annexation of this property as described. Is the motion, is there a second?
Mayor, I think there needs to be a stipulation put in the motion relative to the service delivery agreement with the county, that water and garbage will be provided by the city of Perry as outlined in our service if we're going to annex it.
Very good. Mr. King, did you make that motion? Will you accept the amendment that Mr. Walker proposes?
I would.
Counsel, will you accept the proposal? Very good. Counsel, we have a motion and a second for the annexation of this property as described to the stipulation that the city services will be provided by the city of Perry.
As outlined.
As outlined, within our service delivery.
Where you with the county.
Any questions concerning what this motion and a second is? Is there any discussion regarding this? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Wood. Item eight is any other old business? Eight A is any other old business from the mayor I have done? Item B is any other old business from council members? Miss Bottom Grace? Mr. Walker? Mr. Jackson?
Yes, sir.
Item C is any other old business from the city manager, Mr. Gilmore?
Yes, sir.
Item eight D is any other old business from the assistant city manager, Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Item eight E is any other old business from the city attorney, Ms. Newton? Thank you. Item nine is new business. Nine A are matters that have been referred from the April sixteenth, two thousand nineteen pre-council meeting that we held at five o'clock. Mr. Gilmore's attention at this time?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Item nine D are ordinances for a first reading and introduction. Item ninety-one, this is the first reading of an ordinance to control shareable dockless mobility devices, AKA e-scooters. Mr. Wood?
Thank you, Mayor. Members, mayor members of council, this is a, an issue that has been, been a concern for cities across the country, primarily larger communities, but we're certainly moving into smaller communities as well. Shareable dockless devices are like e-scooters or e-bikes that do not have a dock where they would be taken from, although we will be modifying the ordinance to address that as well before your second reading. But these devices have created issues in a number of communities because of them being left on sidewalks, creating problems for pedestrians, as well as being ridden in the streets without concern or understanding of the laws of the street, without proper safety equipment and so forth. So this ordinance is proposing to ban those facilities in the city of Perry, but also provides an opportunity that if an entity wishes to consider Perry, that we would work with them to determine what regulations may be appropriate and provide a time for testing those before we move forward. Again, that would be at the discretion of the council. So this recommendation is to ban those facilities in the city of Perry.
For both dock and dockless?
That's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Any member of council having any questions? Thank you, sir. Counsel, this is a first reading and introduction, therefore no action is required on counsel at this time. Item nine C is the award of bids. Item nine C one is bid number twenty nineteen dash twenty-three for Tarazza Flooring Restoration and Training.
Good evening, mayor and council. Tonight, one bid award, we are asking council to award is for the restoration of Tarazza Flooring and the police station. This will be on the first ward. We followed all of our standard practices in contacting digital bidders for this award, and we also posted the solicitation to the city of Perry's website and the Georgia Department of Registry. We received four responsive bids ranging from twenty-seven thousand nine hundred dollars to eighty thousand seven hundred seventy-five dollars and twenty cents. And it's staff's recommendation that we go with the low bidder of Diana Shield LLC at the amount of twenty-seven thousand nine hundred dollars.
Any questions from counsel regarding this bid? Hearing none. At this time, I'll entertain a motion that we award the bidder for the Tarazza Floor Restoration to Diana Shield LLC at an amount of twenty-seven thousand nine hundred dollars as described.
Move.
Is the motion and a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item nine D are resolutions for consideration and adoption. Nine D one is a resolution recognizing Georgia Cities Week.
Yes. Mayor and council, I want to present to you a resolution of the city of Perry recognizing Georgia Cities Week, which is April twenty-first through twenty-seventh. Georgia Cities Week is a statewide event sponsored by Georgia Municipal Association. It is an opportunity to showcase and celebrate cities and the services they provide. So we are encouraging all citizens to support the celebration and corresponding activities. That will be coming up next week.
Fantastic. Any questions, Ms. Palmer, regarding this? Hearing none. Counsel, at this time, I'll entertain a motion that we adopt this resolution that recognizes Georgia Cities Week, April twenty-first through the twenty-seventh of twenty nineteen as described.
Move.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. Thank you. Item nine D, we're being considered, we're asked to consider a request to construct speed bumps on Glenwood Avenue. Mr. Smith?
Mayor, mayor council. As was brought to your attention by these citizens here from Lilliman Avenue, petition has been circulated and has been requested of the city that the construction of speed bumps take place on Lilliman Avenue to deal with some of the traffic volume, traffic speed concerns. After our discussions, it does appear that you will prefer for us to put together some viable options, do a little bit more research, a little bit more of the police enforcement action prior to actually moving forward with the speed bumps. So if you have a copy of the petition before you, I'd be happy to take into consideration anything for us to do.
Any further questions from counsel? Thank you, sir. Item nine F would be an approved consent decree between the city of Perry and the Georgia Public Service Commission. Ms. Gilmore?
Thank you, mayor, mayor council. And your board pack is a copy of the proposed consent decree from the Georgia Public Service Commission. City received this as a bill of inability in December to keep up with the line request and the timeframe that the Public Service Commission requires. The causes for that have been corrected. However, we still did do the violation, and we recommend to you to agree to consent the consent decree.
Any questions from counsel for Ms. Gilmore regarding this item? Hearing none. At this time, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the consent decree between the city of Perry and Georgia Public Service Commission as described.
Move.
Is the motion, is there a second?
Yes.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item nine G is a presentation of suggestions to accommodate children during municipal court. Ms. Harrington?
Thank you, mayor, mayor and council. I want to talk about what the new trend that's happening now in municipal court, and that is children are present, and parents are bringing their children to court. As we know, children are not patient, they're little worms, and it's very hard for them to sit still, not talk. So sometimes it creates a little disruption when you have them crying, running around the hall. So we've thought about things to provide for the children to kind of keep them entertained so that, you know, court runs smoothly. And as in front of you, you might have a sample of the coloring book that we're going to start handing out along with crayons for them, and it's more education about municipal court and different persons that have, you know, a specific job in municipal court. The other idea was table of chairs for the children. The challenge we face is space, where to be put it? So as we move towards the future, you know, new city hall, some thought should be about the space now that parents are bringing their children, and sometimes the reasons are because they can't have a caretaker, or, you know, it's either that or they miss court. And we don't want them to miss court, so we want to kind of provide something so that the children are entertained and the parents can take care of their court business. So some ideas count when you... So similar to when you go to the medical office, you have the waiting area in the back, you have the children's kids zone. You can have some puzzles, books, toys. It's looking towards the future, maybe a designated room. There's also that's called the crayon kids zone, and it's iPads, and it has apps that they can play games or read books. Or something. Those are just examples to get us thinking towards that, since it seems like now the parents have children, there's no way around either miss court or, so we want them to come to court, take care of business, and move on with their lives. In the back, there's also some articles I provided about other courts that are doing similar to this, providing a, they call it the children's waiting area. They have volunteers that run it, and the parent drops off the child, and they have guidelines that they have to follow. And it's only for parents that have court business, so it's not like a daycare. It says the parents are in the building, it's not considered a daycare. Those are later on, if we consider something like that, that can be looked into.
Any questions from counsel? Thank you very much. I know it is a, this is an issue, and I give an advice, maybe some interruptions that these children are caused. Thank you very much. Mr. Jackson, I'd also like to compliment you on having coloring book filings.